... and again, we are joined by the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services. Today's subject matter is developmental disabilities, brain injury, child services, child mental health, medical patients, providers, and administration. Start off with introductions to my right, Senator Valentina.
Good morning, I'm Linda Valentina, and I represent State Senate District 31, which is Saco, Olberton Beach, Qualus, Lennington, and Port Hudson.
Good morning, I'm Kate Grant, and I represent Garderew at Farmville in the House of Representatives.
Good morning, I'm Linda Sandborn, I represent District 26, which is part of York.
Hello, I am Heather Saraci, and I proudly represent the individuals in District 28, which is part of Saco.
Good morning, my name is Earl Frye, I oversee the House District 124, that's part of Bangor, and part of Port Hudson.
Hello, I'm Mary Jorgensen, representing District 41, beautiful Deering Center in Port.
My name is Tom Linder, and I represent District 70, which is in Arlewha, western Bay, and Street.
John Martin, House District 151, western Aruston County.
Jim Hamper, Senate Chair, from Hoxworth, and 13 towns in western Bay, and now to the unfortunate.
Senator, I'm Drew Bittene, House Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee. I represent part of the city of Westbrook.
Senator Ian Castor, one District, a portion of Cleveland, and a portion of Westbrook, and Eric Jorgensen is actually my representative.
Richard Aldean, I live in the town of Hancock, I represent House District 136, which is nine towns in eastern coastal Hancock County, and one town in western Washington.
Good morning, I'm Karen Bashon, I represent House District 29, which is coastal Scottville.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Christine Berstein, I represent District 96, which is seven towns in Long Island.
Good morning, my name is Peter Stuckey, I represent House District 42, which is part of Fort.
I'm Patty Heinenson, I represent District 4, which is parts of York, Wells, Sanford, and all of Ongway.
Good morning, my name is Frances Hannah, I live in Bethel, and I represent three towns, and Franklin, Oxford.
Good morning, I'm Deb Sanderson, I represent District 88, which is Chelsea, Whitefield, Jefferson, and part of Northboro.
Good morning, I'm Jeff Tibley, I represent District 75, Charlotte Lees, and part of Littlewood.
Welcome, I'm Heidi Rotendo, I'm part of representing our list, House District 15, and House Chair of Appropriations.
And once again, we are joined by Commissioner Martin, Health and Human Services, Mary May here, testimony in hand. And for committee members, she's scheduled once today, we'll do it all this morning, and let her go off to business this Saturday, so watch out.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's Friday.
And the sunshine.
And the sunshine, political. Senator Hamper, Representative Rotendo, Senator Bittene, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Appropriation and Financial Affairs, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services. I am Mary May Hugh, Commissioner of the Department of Health and Human Services, and I am here today to speak in support of LR 1852, the Governor's Biannual Budget Proposal for State Fiscal Years 2016 and 2017. I'm going to jump down through much of this, and just touch upon on page two, I have the smaller font today, so my page numbers line up with yours. Today, the testimony covers a broad range of DHHS offices, including the Division of Licensing and Regulatory Services, the Office of Child and Family Services, the Office of Aging and Disability Services, and the Office of Main Care Services. I've touched upon the background for both DLRS and OMS, and then shifted down to OCFS. The Office of Child and Family Services has 659 and a half legislative authorized positions, and had expenditures in state fiscal year 14 of 174.6 million, with 104.7 million of that in general fund expenditures. We are anticipating expenditures of 177.8 million in 15, with 107.4 million of that in general fund expenditures. The baseline general fund budget for the Office of Child and Family Services in state fiscal year 16 is 109.7 million, and in 17, it is 110.8 million. Inclusive of the department's proposed initiatives, those figures would increase to 116.1 million in 16, or a 5.8 percent increase from a legislatively approved baseline general fund budget, and to 117.3 million in 17, a 5.9 percent increase. The Office for Aging and Disability Services has 329 legislatively authorized positions, had expenditures in state fiscal year 14 of 58 million, with 46 million of that in general fund expenditures. We are anticipating expenditures of 64.9 million in 15, with 50.6 million of that in general fund expenditures. The baseline general fund budget in 16 is 51.9, and 52.5 in 17. Inclusive of the department's proposed initiatives, those figures would increase to 53.3 million in 16, a 2.7 percent increase, and 53.9 million in 17, a 2.8 percent increase from the baseline. Jumping down now, and beginning with each of the initiatives, beginning on page 257 and on 258. This is a position transfer. This initiative transfers and reallocates one human services caseworker supervision, supervisor position from 100 percent general fund in the Developmental Services Community Program to 52.4 percent general fund, and 47.6 percent other special revenue funds in the Crisis Outreach Program. Again, this is in the Office of Aging and Disability Services. This initiative is necessary to accurately align the duties and responsibilities of this position with the appropriate funding. On page 259, again, within the Office of Aging and Disability Services, this initiative transfers and allocates three office assistant two positions, and one office associate two position, from 64 percent general fund and 36 percent other special revenue funds, in the Commissioner's District Operations Program, to 100 percent general fund in the Office of Aging and Disability Services Central Office Program. Again, this initiative is necessary to align these positions with the appropriate funding source for the assigned duties. This initiative corresponds with initiatives that were heard, or will be referenced later in today's testimony. The next initiative, on page 258, this initiative transfers and allocates one human services caseworker position from 100 percent general fund in the Developmental Services Community Program, to 100 percent general fund in the Office of Aging and Disability Services Adult Protection Services Program. This position transfer is a continued part of the restructuring effort passed by the Legislature in 2012, combining the former Office of Adults with Cognitive and Physical Disabilities, and the Office of Elder Services into the Office of Aging and Disability Services. This initiative corresponds to Initiative 1063, which was heard on Wednesday. On page 258, this initiative provides funding to strengthen delivery system oversight within the Office of Aging and Disability Services. It is seeking additional general fund support in '16 of $125,000, and a similar amount in state fiscal year 17. The funding would facilitate alignment of state and community organizations, and support a centralized no wrong door resources system. This effort will also streamline access to and improve coordination across all services. These services include operational data and report standardization, management reporting, and program evaluation assessments, and development of internal and external program performance measures and requisite reporting. This also correlates to an initiative that was heard on Wednesday. This initiative is designed to streamline the work process, achieve greater efficiencies in the management reporting systems from the legacy offices, and to move away from manual data search and reporting.
Good morning, Representative Jordan. Thank you. Can you just remember what a no wrong door program is? I wasn't familiar with that term.
Yep, so certainly in the Office of Aging and Disability Services, Developmental Services, the system itself is incredibly complicated and complex, and much of what we've been doing, in particular in support through a grant that was provided, known as the Balancing Incentive Payment Program, again, another term that isn't all that self-explanatory, it really is to provide centralized access, so that individuals aren't having to go through multiple program entrances in order to get a more comprehensive approach to their needs. As we see, especially with services for the disabled or for elderly, as we often say, their needs span across multiple program areas, but sometimes the funding sources create these silos that try to put them into one category when we really need to be addressing a broad array of services.
Thank you very much. Sounded like a game show this one.
Yes, well, there's so much that could be said about that, yes. Next. On page 259, again, within the Office of Aging and Disability Services, this initiative transfers one social services program specialist one position, from 100 percent general fund in the Developmental Services Community Program, to 100 percent general fund in the Office of Aging and Disability Services Adult Protective Services Program. And this position, again, is part of the restructuring of that overall office, and again, corresponds with an initiative that was discussed on Wednesday. On page 276, this is within the Office of Main Care Services. This is requesting funding in state fiscal year 17, general fund dollars, of $899,878. This is part of the overall initiative, the number of initiatives that we've described, requesting $46 million to address a number of services, particularly within our waiver programs for home and community-based services. This one pertains to our Section 20 waiver, Home and Community Benefits for Adults with Other Related Conditions waiver. Section 20 provides services for adults with other related conditions. This waiver was originally developed, and again, was in response to a lawsuit that was filed, developed to serve individuals with cerebral palsy or severe epilepsy, who are only able to receive services in a nursing home. Some of you may recall, this was known as the Van Meter lawsuit, the Van Meter settlement. And I'll get this wrong, one of the programs, one of the housing programs, if you ever have a chance to visit Knights Court, Darren? Knights Court in Bangor, really is the end result of this work, in order to support young men who were in nursing facilities as a result of their needs, and yet had the opportunity to truly live more independently and in the community. So Knights Court, if you've ever had a chance to visit, an impressive housing structure, uniquely designed to support these individuals. The waiver has been operating for two years, and today serves 25 individuals each year, and additional 10 people are added to the waiver until it reaches capacity at 75. Again, these were part of the terms of the Van Meter settlement. The current funding provides resources to move individuals with certain diagnoses out of nursing facilities, and into more appropriate care in their homes and in their communities. In the course of operating this waiver, a number of individuals have also been identified who did not meet the eligibility criteria, but have similar functional needs. This proposed initiative broadens the eligibility for the ORC program, and adds funds for an additional 12 waiver slots. This would cover rare conditions, including muscular dystrophy, Huntington's Disease, spinobifida, and other rare developmentally based conditions. Services under the waiver programs include residential employment and community access, as well as assisted technology and home modifications. This initiative is consistent with legislation session to serve persons with these rare conditions, and I don't have the LD code that this corresponds with.
Representative Bittene?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. There are actually about three bills on the HHS committee, and we've heard public testimony on a couple of them, so again, I think we've had some really good dialogue around this issue, especially people with ALS, honey fever disease, and I'm glad to see, you know, conversations around this in the Department. The Section 20 waiver, I'm looking back at the materials the Department provided to us during the budget orientation, and I know that we were a little particular because it arose out of a lawsuit, but in the materials that the Department provided us, it's not shown a waitlist for those services. So could you provide us a little more detail about how this, you know, the budgetary number was built, and also about, again, how the Department assesses the overall need for people on these services, and again, if the goal is ultimately to get to 75, which I don't know if that's a cap in the waiver, or something that's addressed in the lawsuit, how do we figure out who the 75 people are that are going to get those services? And again, is that really reflective of the true need of people that need that care? I know it's a multi-part question, but maybe you can address that.
Yeah, well, actually, I think it'd be better if, for the work session, we develop the document that provides additional information for how those individuals are identified. I think the terms of the settlement need to play into this, so I want to make sure that we are accurately reflecting the expectations that are laid out in that settlement, so we'll get you additional information.
So again, I guess maybe the essence of it, is it, based on what I'm seeing on the board, there's not a waitlist for those, for that waiver right now, is that?
I'd have to check. Of course, everything that's provided to you is often a point in time, so I'll have to double check on that particular waiver.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Representative Martin?
Thank you very much. Actually, I have the same question, what happens when the 75 is arrived at, so appreciate you getting this in here. Thank you.
Representative?
Oh, Representative Stone, sorry. Can't see it from working, sorry.
Thanks, Senator. So I guess it reminds me, it's the third version of the same question. The additional 10 people that are, you were talking about adding every year, so you need 75 cases, is there an initiative to cover the expense of those 10 people?
And again, we'll have to get the details behind the assumptions in the dollar between what was already encompassed in the waiver, and what is expected related to expanding to these additional conditions.
So it would either be an initiative, or would it just be an increase in the baseline?
Yeah, we'll have to take a look at what was included in those assumptions here and in the baseline.
That would be a learning opportunity for me.
Okay. This initiative is requesting, in general fund dollars in '16, $18,313,544, and in This initiative would increase funding for Section 21, Home and Community-Based Waiver for People with Intellectual Disabilities and Autism Disorder. The Home and Community-Based Benefit for Members with Intellectual Disabilities or Autistic Disorders gives members eligible for this benefit the option to live in their home or another home in the community, thus waiving institutional services. The benefit supplements rather than replaces personal, family work, and community relationships and complements. To be eligible for this benefit, members must meet medical and financial eligibility requirements, and there must be a funded opening within the waiver. Benefits include an array of residential employment and community support. Today, more than 1,000 people with significant disabilities are waiting to receive these comprehensive services, to allow them to live as independently as possible in the community. Many of them have been waiting more than seven years for these services, and in numerous cases, they are living with aging parents who are struggling to survive ongoing care. The state's investment would draw down an additional $79 million in federal funding. Due to the complexity of these services and the intensity of the needs for these currently on the waitlist, the Department does not anticipate being able to add all members in the first year. We are seeking amounts in each year that reasonably represent the number of people who will likely begin receiving these services. And I appreciate that you all have a number of questions associated with this waiver, its history, and certainly, as many of you know, there have been a number of lawsuits, beginning with efforts around conditions within Pineland, and then subsequent to that, the availability of services in the community, also consent decree around those services. More recently, another lawsuit, the Aldrich lawsuit that was recently settled, intended to continue to provide necessary funds to support the demand and the array of services in the community. There is a very comprehensive chart book that has just been finalized, with significant data around the numbers of individuals, the services provided, the cost per person, trying to also anticipate demand, so the number of children being diagnosed with autism, and the significant increase for those children, and what their array of needs will be as they age out of the children's services, the robust array of services that are often provided through the schools, and into the adult system. So this chart book, we will get to all of you, that I think will also help to inform your deliberation around this request.
Representative Martin?
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I'm looking at the Department compare an analysis or projection by quarters as to how many people might be picked up in each one of the quarters, or next biennium.
Yeah, and again, we're trying to forecast this based upon the money that has been provided in the last couple of years, but the challenge of, as consumers and guardians, the parents, the case managers begin to evaluate their options, from the time the funding is available to the time that they are able to make certain decisions, so that has factored into that projection, and we will provide that information to you.
And really, I'm asking, I'm just wondering in terms of first quarter, starting July, as to whether or not there's a real possibility that you, it will be difficult to fill that slot, so how we plan to use it for the biennium.
And that was part of the assumptions made in this request for funding, but we'll break that down for you by quarter of what we're expecting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Representative Bittene?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. And again, I'm looking forward to seeing the chart book. I think there's a copy available online, people can look at it. And again, I'm glad to see this funding, obviously. You know, last year, we, you know, legislature made it a priority to fund the high priority 21 slots, the Section 21 slots, you know, had to override the Governor's veto in order to make that funding a reality, so again, I'm very glad to see that be one of the Department's priorities in this budget. What I'm disappointed in is not seeing funding for the other waitlists that are maintained by the Department for home-based care for elderly folks, and I know this is a topic that we discussed in the past, in committees and in other forums. Again, looking back at the information that the Department gave us, there are approximately 1,200 people, elderly people, waiting on waitlists, waiting for services that are important to keep them aging in place, in their homes, out of nursing homes. Some of these people are eligible, actually, to go into nursing homes, and would prefer to stay at home. And when I see that not be a priority, and I also don't see additional funding for, you know, on the rate side, for the agencies that provide home-based care, you know, really, again, I just really want to understand why, you know, that was not made more of a priority in this budget.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear you sharing the very concerns that we've been articulating for several years. I disagree with your statement about having to override, at least in terms of the funding, for the Developmental Disability Waiver, the Governor's veto, that was a broader issue. The Governor has long stated his commitment, has put funding in these budgets, and as you know, those funds were only partially provided. We certainly believe strongly in the need to adequately fund. In terms of the home-based care and the home maker services, we have been looking at the opportunity to maximize existing federal block grants, that would, in fact, be able to be used to support and cover the current demand for services on those waitlists that are 100 percent state-funded, that are not eligible for federal Medicaid match. So we are optimistic about the opportunity to meet those needs without the need to present additional general fund requests.
So when do we think we're going to see that come to fruition, this search for block rate funds, and when are we going to see an initiative from the Department around that?
We are hopeful that we will be able to advance that within the next fiscal year.
But in the meantime, you know, those folks are going to continue to wait on waitlists.
Well, the timing would be no different than when the Legislature acts on our biannual budget requests for these other waivers. It would be consistent with that.
Representative Stone?
Thank you. Commissioner, with the new assessments in place, and there's a, the funding mechanism to go along with that, could that, a primer on that, be part of our orientation as well? I'd like to get a sense of the timing of when folks come into the new system.
Yep.
And what, what the feedback has been from the provider community and the consumers about the...
Supports intensity scale.
Yeah, well, the money attached to it is, I guess, the thing I'm trying to get my awareness to be strong.
So Representative Stuckey, actually, can I just, I want to go back, Representative Bittene, I left off one part of your question. You asked about rate analysis for home-based care. I also just wanted to indicate, we have commissioned a study, an analysis to be done on home-based care rates, because we absolutely share the concern that without the adequate workforce to support the needs for people in their homes, we're not going to be able to effectively address people on the waitlist. So we do have a rate study, and we are hopeful to have that information shortly. And again, to the extent that we can bring that forward as part of the budget package, or change package, at least to identify what those costs will be, but we certainly appreciate the need to be evaluating those rates. Representative Stuckey has asked about an initiative that has been underway for a couple of years, to better align resources with consumers based upon their engagement around their individualized goals, their needs, a evidence-based comprehensive assessment to support individual choice, and to ensure that we've got the right complement of services and greater flexibility for consumers to make those choices. We've done a lot of work engaging providers, consumers, guardians, case managers, around the implementation of the supports intensity scale, otherwise also known as supporting individual success, and we can provide all of those documents to the committee.
The thing I, the thing I'm curious about, I mean, I absolutely agree, and the participation has come, I think, around the system, the SIS, and the allocation of the, only giving people what they need when they need it. I think there's real support for that. I think the thing I'm trying to get a handle on is, in the implementation, have the resources matched up with what the, what they need to be, to be able to deliver the services they're intended to.
Right, so, and I think the challenge that we face, any time you implement that type of a reform, regardless of the provider community that we're talking about, the providers have built business models based upon existing policies, based upon existing reimbursement structures, and certainly, this is going to create a different business model and structure. And so, absolutely, that has been part of the discussion, the engagement with providers, to make sure that we're closely understanding that, so that we're not contributing to a disruption in the availability of those services. A lot of work around analyzing costs among providers, surveys that have been done, evaluating those costs, as we have designed this effort. So we'll provide you with the information.
Yeah, I think that it's our role to take a look at that as well. So look forward to it. Thank you.
On page 336... On page 336. This is an additional line pertaining to the federal funding for Section 21. On page 273 and 275. This is pertaining to the waiver for Home and Community Benefits for Adults with Brain Injuries. This is requesting general fund dollars in '16 of $866,773 and in '17 of $1,732,119. This would provide funding to increase the allocation to Section 18, Home and Community Benefits for Adults with Brain Injury. Current funding for the Brain Injury Waiver provides resources to move brain-injured individuals receiving services at nursing homes and at out-of-state facilities to more appropriate services, certainly back in Maine and in their homes and communities. The Brain Injury Waiver was approved and began to serve main care members in late 2014. The original waiver was designed to be cost-reful over the funds for the Brain Injury Waiver, moving from the private non-medical institutions, Brain Injury Residential Treatment and Community Reintegration Services. These services are now offered under the Brain Injury Waiver in a more coordinated, comprehensive system of care. Over the past two years, a waitlist of more than 50 individuals has developed, many of whom have had extended hospital stays due to the lack of immediate openings in residential treatment. In order to serve these individuals, this budget initiative would add 52 additional slots and funding to the waiver.
Representative Whitaker.
I just want to go back to the conversation that you and Representative Gutierrez had earlier about the rate study that's being done currently in terms of trying to address carefully elderly. And I'm wondering, in terms of these waitlists for developmentally disabled individuals in the state, are we facing a problem in terms of hiring? Are rates such that we are able to hire people to provide the care that enables us to take people off the waitlist and to get them into other kinds of settings?
I think that's what I was underscoring with Representative Gutierrez, and has been consistent for our communications throughout, is that the challenge of a program that has been underwater and drowning in sea of red ink is that there are a number of areas that need to be evaluated and addressed in order to support a workforce that is able to support certainly people in their homes and in their communities. The waiver that I just described, the Brain Injury Waiver, the ability to bring individuals home, obviously is dependent upon our ability to attract staff. For many of these individuals with brain injuries, the challenge of caring for them is great. They can be physically combative, and so we are certainly with a request here, seeking additional funds to support and expand capacity, to attract providers, to help to support the attracting and retaining workforce. And we will continue to look at the rates that are directly related to supporting an expanded workforce to support a broader rate of needs, including needs, and certainly those in home-based care.
Representative Gutierrez.
So again, I just wanted to, I'd like to try to understand, I think I did say with the work sessions, I mean, I was sort of, you know, my line of question to you, Commissioner, was really about the waitlist for the elderly and the workforce that takes care of those folks. I think Representative Thunus' question, you know, is related, but it's about the workforce necessary to take care of the people who are going to track fund to take off the 21, the 29, some of these other waivers. I mean, absent that rate study, I mean, how is it possible to make decisions and build a budget, you know, if the goal is to clear the waitlist? And undoubtedly, that rate study is going to tell us, I don't want to prejudge anything, that our rates are too low. So when you build this budget and you're making assumptions around what it's going to cost and what the provider capacity is going to be, you know, how effective is that legislative exercise without being informed by the rate study?
Well, I think we're talking about two different types of services. So for Section 21, for the brain injury, those are very much a part of how we have designed the budget and made these recommendations that are all about both serving the needs of these individuals as well as the provider capacity. You asked me about the home-based care, the homemade services, and then I did explain that certainly we want to address the waitlist, but we're also articulating, as you are, the need to deal with home care reimbursement rates that are directly affecting the wages that are paid to individuals that support those services. So our budget proposal here certainly is taking into consideration the provider capacity and the costs associated with caring for these individuals.
So there's nothing in, you're going to get a rate study that is going to impact any caregiving that's going to be necessary to clear the waitlist that are cleared in this proposed budget?
The waitlist that are here and the information that has been informing our budget proposals includes our support for provider costs and capacity. We are continuing, as I was discussing with Representative Stuckey, ensuring that the costs associated with the care, as we look at the individualized budgets to support the evidence-based assessment model, that those costs are being appropriately reflected. So yes, simply put, those are reflected in these budget proposals. Okay.
Okay.
And thank you. I apologize for confusing things by bringing in the waitlist for the elderly. My question really was, do we know that we have the workforce that we can gear up to, you know, address the needs that come through my job?
And you all are, share the same concerns that we have expressed about the need to prioritize funding in this program to meet these critical core needs, and there are a number of rates that have been neglected for years in the budget. That's why we have the nursing facility proposal in front of you. The challenge is how many of these we can...